Item on today's agenda is the interview of Dr. Lisa Coons. And I see Dr. Coons, come on in. We welcome you to the table. Good afternoon. We'll let you get seated, situated, and we will have you to do your 10-minute presentation, and that will be followed by questions by board members. So have at it.
Okay, well, first, I want to thank you. I am so honored and humbled to be here again, but also thank you for your focus, effort, and dedication to such an important process. I appreciate the dedication of the board members, and I want to recognize that. I also know it's hard to be a board member. You put in a lot of extra time and dedication, and so thank you for serving the children of Michigan. You'll notice on the cover of the detailed entry plan that I gave you today, there is student artwork. There are no students around us right now, so I wanted to bring a little bit of student expression to the table as I began, and also wanted to give you a statement that I carry passionately with me every child, every day as a center. In your packet, you'll notice there are blue, yellow, and green tabs. On those tabs, those are attributed to the three different phases of my blueprint for success. First, you'll see the blue tab, so you can look at that as we walk through the listen and learn phase. The yellow tab will show you the analyze and share phase, and the plan and implement on the green tab. As we walk through each one of these phases, we will also focus on three critical areas of action, and we'll happy to walk you through that. As you look at that blue tab, our first phase will be the listen and learn phase that will begin in October of 2025 if I am selected as the candidate. And in that phase, I've already started a bit. I have had the opportunity over the past week to talk to a lot of Michigan educators. I talked to Kelly Cosmano, the 2024 Teacher of the Year, and was so energized by her passion around the knowledge teachers in Michigan have and the knowledge they share, as well she talked to me about her concerns about retiring teachers and the loss of knowledge and how to reengage our retiring teachers. I had the opportunity to talk to the ISD Superintendent in Saginaw, and he was so excited about his new preschool STEM academy and the opportunities that urban children will have. He also talked to me a lot about how do we bring ISDs together more closely with the Department of Education to serve our districts. Several ISD superintendents who I talked to spoke about that, and had the opportunity to talk to the Regional Superintendent, ISD Superintendent, Mr. Nguyen in the Upper Peninsula, and talked about the scarcity of staff and the availability of staff with how large of an area and range the Upper Peninsula covers. So it's been enlightening to hear these great conversations, and the common thread is the passion for children. And so you'll see in my first phase, an expanded listen and learn process that includes key leader conversations, and that would be a one-on-one conversation with each of you as the board, the governor or the governor's office, the budget team, the state budget team, the my executive director, key legislative members, but really starting to understand in a SWOT format what strengths we believe we have and where we need to go. I also have a proposed school listening tour on page 11 through 13 in the back around our regional teachers of the year. I hope our regional teachers of the year would be willing to be ambassadors in each region and lead us through their great region, and so we can see many different things. I think school learning tours are incredibly important, first, because we honor and elevate the work that our teachers do every day. Second, we need to be able to see what the practices we believe are happening in Lansing actually are happening when they are in classrooms. And third, we need to elevate those promising bright model practices across the state. After those school learning tours, we would have the opportunity to have community focus groups with community stakeholders and community leaders, and you'll see sample draft questions in your packet on page 14. Those questions have general questions and opportunities, but also specific questions that are aligned to Michigan's top 10 educational strategic plan. Next, we would also have stakeholder roundtables. Michigan has a wealth of stakeholder groups, whether it's our Student Advisory Council, our Teacher Advisory Council, the education associations, a variety of nonprofits, foundations, and the opportunity to establish strong communications with those stakeholder groups will be incredibly important, and these meetings would be serve as a first set of meetings that would then become regular relationship-building cadences. You'll also see questions, draft questions for those roundtable meetings on page 15. And then, obviously, we would not be able to speak to all stakeholders across Michigan, so we would also be able to launch an online feedback survey. My colleague in another state did this, and she received over 5,000 responses and told me it was incredibly beneficial as she started her first few months. And ultimately, we also need to hear from internal staff, so you'll see an internal draft staff questionnaire on page 16. Not only do we need to listen and learn during that first phase, and incredibly important for me to hear all of those diverse stakeholders and bring those trends together, but also accelerating critical focal areas that are have been established. We talked last time about the focus on PA 146 and early literacy, and need to start that work as soon as possible and bringing and understanding where our districts, our public school academies, RISA's, and ISDs are. Also, understanding what is happening with attendance across Michigan. The overall attendance doesn't meet some of the great districts that are doing wonderful things around attendance, and how do we scale and spread those models of success so that all students have access and opportunity through attending school every day? And then finally, we want to make sure that we're understanding all of the diverse opportunities to build the educator pipeline and understanding what practices and what opportunities are not just bringing aspiring educators to the table, but helping them to and through their programs and then retaining them in their field. We want to make sure that as we move forward and look at persistent challenges with educator recruitment, that we're truly honoring those practices that work and also retain those teachers for the future. As Kelly said, that's incredibly important. In Phase Two, which will overlap our Phase One, we'll start to analyze and share. I would love to work with the department to look at our policies, procedures, statutes, organizational chart, and documents to understand where we are and how we're designed to support educators. Provide weekly feedback to the board and updates on all of the listening sessions, of course, invite you to come along when you can, but know that you have other responsibilities, and do a deep dive and analysis across all metrics in the Michigan's top 10 strategic educational plan, and see those cross-functioning areas. We know that Goal Three is a challenge and a barrier around attendance, around wellness, around nutrition, to graduation, to early literacy, to post-secondary opportunities. So starting to look at those data and that metric across those goals to see how they're correlating and impacting each other. I think as we continue our collaborative school learning tours, we will also want to create a promising practices playbook so that Michigan, which is a large state with very diverse opportunities, can learn from each other, will have the opportunity to see educators, see spotlights, but how do we build a playbook so they can learn and connect with each other? And then I would also love to relaunch the educationally speaking newsletter that is sent out weekly to our educators with updates with a personalized superintendent letter so I can establish and build relationships across the state and find another place to elevate those teachers and that great spotlight and find ways to bring people together. Again, those three critical focus areas will really start to ramp up in November. In both Virginia and Tennessee, we hosted Regional Literacy Leadership Series, and we brought leadership teams from districts and charters all over a region to come together and spend a half-day, talking about where they are, what they need, and providing a comprehensive look. As I talked about earlier, Tennessee went through stutter starts. We did teacher training, then we did coaches, and then we did materials. Bringing people together and really talking about the why and the cohesive vision will be incredibly important. That will launch these literacy leadership series, but we'll also have opportunities for ISDs and RISA's to partner closely with their stakeholders and their leaders in one setting and have multiple entry points, because we know some districts and some of public school academies are down the highway and some are just starting, and an opportunity for them to share and learn from each other was tremendously powerful in creating coherence for me both in Tennessee and Virginia. So would hope to be able to do that in Michigan as well. And then launching an attendance task force. You'll see on page 19 a sample set of stakeholders for that task force to be able to learn from those districts and those public school academies that are doing well with attendance, understanding those strategies, but also understanding the challenges and barriers that we're seeing, and bring those stakeholders together and have them map out, starting in late October, the different areas of opportunity that they want to study and focus on. And then bringing the third critical area, bringing higher education, nonprofits together to look at different pathways. I am getting the one minute and not even halfway through, so I'm going to try and talk a little bit faster, which I don't want to do for you, but as we think about the plan and implementation phase, starting in January, that is where we'll look at Michigan's top 10 strategic education plan. I know several of you asked me questions about that during my first conversation with you, and I think it's important to take all of those trends from the stakeholder listening and learning and better understand what educators, what stakeholders are saying across Michigan and be able to look at that plan. It's been five years. It was right after COVID when you adopted it as a board. What are they saying? What needs refinement? What might need to be added, taken out? What might need to definitely stay in that plan moving forward? And also talk about key metrics and performance targets, then go out again on summer tours and understand what resources our educators will need so we can coalesce around those performance targets and really move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Coons. And we're going to go ahead and get started with the first question, and the first question will come from me. During your time in Virginia, you were tasked with carrying out Governor Youngkin's Restoring Excellence in Education Agenda, an agenda many saw as highly politicized. It included history standards criticized for minimizing slavery and civil rights, the rollback of protections for transgender students, a tip line for parents to report divisive practices and policies, advancing vouchers that drained public school resources. Here in Michigan, we've already seen legislators and have been for a while trying to push similar agendas. In an oversight hearing, we had lawmakers that called for a return to a 1920s style of teaching, said that 50 kids in a classroom was acceptable, dismissed investments in literacy and mental health supports, and even blasted board members for a resolution defending civil rights and democracy. As Virginia's State Superintendent, you were responsible for implementing these type directives. How directly were you connected to these policies? And if selected here, how will you assure Michigan that you will not bring that type of political agenda into our schools and promote protecting all children, telling the truth, full truth of our history, and standing up for our marginalized students?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent question. I appreciate the opportunity to respond. Several of those initiatives happened under the first two superintendents during his administration, but the implementation of the history social science standards was one of the things that I was tasked for, and we really had to step back and make sure those were reflective. As I've talked about in my Virginia tenure, it was important for me to go across the state and get diverse stakeholders and diverse stakeholder opportunities. I think you will see a shift in the historical relationship with the Department of Education and with diverse stakeholders, and one of my priorities of going out and being in the field was to non-politicize education and make sure that I was building relationships with stakeholders and really worked diligently with our associations, with our partners, to reestablish a focus on educator excellence and educator voice around that work and make sure students had opportunities and heard and that local decisions were held in local areas and that we weren't doing politics through the Department of Education. Certainly a challenging set of places to be in, but an important place as the leader of a department and an agency to be non-political and nonpartisan and focus on efforts for children and leave some of that more political components to the administration and other people in that space.
Thank you so much.
Just a brief follow-up. I think there's, there is some consensus around the over politicization of education, and that's really sort of been something that's happened in education policy, you know, going back quite some time in this country. What does that look like, though? I mean, I understand the goal of taking politics out, but I'd like to know, like, what, for you, what does that look like?
I think some people have asked me in my conversations with leaders, why Michigan? And I think the exciting piece of Michigan in the state role is that you are supported by a divorce diverse board, and you are hired by a diverse board, and you are working across different scenarios. As President Pugh mentioned, when you are hired to work under a governor, it's a much harder space to be in, but students are at the center, and the needs of students and the framework around giving students access and opportunity is the center of that work. It's not about returning to 1920s and having 50 students in a classroom, because that's not student-centered, and it's not what evidence-based and research says. And grounding decisions in evidence-based and what research says is something that we have to advocate for when we're in a nonpartisan stance. And when we're working across different complex stakeholders, we have to bring them together and show them evidence in a way that's digestible and opportunities to understand impact. I think educator voice is an incredibly important space for that, and part of that school learning tour and those stakeholder engagement is to make sure that the practitioners and the experts' voice are guiding the work as we move forward.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to talk a little bit about funding. One of the, one of the aspects of Virginia, which I find quite interesting, is the added funding for community schools and schools that use the full-service community schools model. Could you tell me what your familiarity is with the concept of community schools and what your philosophy is regarding differentiated funding? Because in Michigan, we've been sort of going through with some fits and starts in terms of equality versus equity, equity and driving resources where they're needed. So could you please expound on your philosophy of that?
Sure, so I also have funding experience in Tennessee where we went from a categorical to a student-weighted funding formula, which really helped us think differently about student needs. So in Tennessee, similar to Michigan, there are very large districts with high transportation needs, similar to Michigan, where you have to think about the transportation costs, which might not be needed in a three-square mile. And that's, that's the difference between equality and equity is thinking about the needs and focusing on that need-based approach. From a community school standpoint, there are about four different concepts in Virginia. There's community in schools, there's community schools, there's a community school grant that's different than the national community school models. So it's a very muddied space in Virginia around what is community schools. It was something that was challenging with the legislature because there were funding pieces that were tied to, say, attendance advisors in Appalachia, which were very important that they were using community schools money. That is probably not the community schools model that you're thinking about. And so community schools meant a lot of different things. I am very familiar with the community in schools model and used it in our turnaround schools in Nashville and providing all of the wraparound services, the mental health services, the nursing services, workforce services for families, clothing, nutritional aspects, and did a lot of work in Nashville with the community in schools model and the supports that provided access to families and actually changed massively the attendance in some of our high-need schools because their families came for the resources in the wraparound supports and actually helped build relationships and needs for families. In northern Virginia, we had the Arlington School District, which used some of their community schools options for multilingual centers in their schools that provided those resources and supports and entry points for multilingual families in that space. So I'm not sure if I answered specifically your question, but wanted to give you my experience.
And how familiar are you with the school finance, research, collaborative work, the legislation that sort of required that costing-out study? And just thoughts on how the legislature has responded to the findings of the SFRC?
I think there was great starts of movement to the responses of the study and where you needed the components on transportation, on different pieces and different needs for students were really important and provided great opportunities. I know that's a lot of where the debate is. I think some of the challenges with resourcing funding to that level is making sure we transparently talk about the impact of those funds and making sure we're connecting those funds to how they are impacting children. So I think one opportunity in all school funding, as we talk about things like whether I fund transportation or I fund roads or different spaces where there is one pie and you're trying to figure out how to spend the money, it is important to show how those funds are being used to impact children, and that is part of the storytelling and communication work that is so incredibly important. To continue the work of SFRC and moving funding forward for children is to show how are those additional dollars changing experiences for children in diverse settings.
So I want to thank you for your years of service to public education as a teacher, administrator, and policy advocate. It's a really impressive record of accomplishments. My question is, given your role as Director of Academics for the Lead Public Schools in Nashville, a charter school network, then as Executive Director of Instructional Leadership in Tennessee under Kevin Huffman, prominent pro-charter, pro-voucher political operative, and then your time working for Governor Youngkin in Virginia, who has proposed significant funding for a private school voucher program in spite of the state's General Assembly consistently rejecting those vouchers, could you tell us the following? One, if you would support private school vouchers in Michigan, even though the state's constitution expressly forbids state tax dollars being used for private school tuition? Two, if you would support opting into President Trump's proposed federal-private school voucher initiative? And three, how would you work with a state Board of Education that has passed several resolutions on the importance of increased transparency and accountability for our state's charter schools?
I believe deeply in public schools and public opportunities for children. I think parents should have the opportunity to have space to make choices, and I think lead public schools, when I was the Executive Director there, was in early phases of charter development. They had moved from two to four schools and were in high-need areas where parents needed choice. I also had the opportunity to work closely with Memphis Lift in Memphis. That was a, a strong pro-charter advocate for parent choice and parent opportunities around public schools. So I strongly support and focus public charter opportunities, but not the privatization of schools and school choice.
And vouchers?
And vouchers. For public school opportunities.
I'm not clear on that part. You what with vouchers?
I support opportunities for funding for parent choice and public school opportunities only.
So you would support vouchers?
If they were for public school opportunities. I believe we take money away from public schools a lot of time, and that causes some of the challenge Ms. Lipton talked about, if we can't give the opportunity for our public schools to be funded and successful.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. As it relates to charters in Michigan, because Michigan, charters can mean different things in different states, and just wanting to know if you're familiar with the charter landscape here in Michigan, familiar with some of the resolutions that we've passed here as a board, familiar with even some of the legislation that we've, we've supported and advocated for around transparency with charters here. For-profit charters have proliferated at a rate greater than across the country. Let me say, for-profit EMOs. And we've also seen billions of dollars that we don't know if it's making it to the classroom or if it's going out of the state to, to people's pockets. So I just want to make sure and see if you have familiarity with Michigan's landscape.
Yes, and Ms. Snyder asked last time about funding transparency and where public dollars go to support schools. I think that's true in any public school that is taking public dollars. I think it is important for us to be transparent about how the dollars taken actually impact opportunities for children, and am familiar with some of your advocacy. I think it is incredibly important, regardless of a for-profit or nonprofit, they should have transparency in their funding.
Very good. How would you approach the issue of our special education students not graduating at a rate that is acceptable? What strategies would you implement to ensure improved special education graduation rates?
I think when we really dig into the data, and you saw in my entry plan in Phase Two, a deep dive in the data, a lot of times, we don't always look at student group data across spaces, and some of our highest students who don't attend are our special education students. Some of our students who have lowest access to CTE programs and other programs like AP and IB and have been presented to the board in different ways don't have access to all of those innovative and different programs. So I think realigning that opportunity gap for our special education students, making sure we're thinking about attendance, supporting families, making sure our students have support. One of the things I love about the school index in Michigan is you talk about growth and achievement. I think it's incredibly important to look at our student groups and make sure our student groups were tracking that growth and achievement as well, because it's too late to help students graduate in 11th grade. Like, that graduation recovery is more of a Band-Aid to get someone across the stage, not get them to their next step. So we really have to think about early on-track and growth opportunities in elementary and middle school. I think often middle school is a lost space, in particular, as a former middle school principal, a lost space for, like, making sure our gaps don't grow. So it's incredibly important for us to understand that data and understand the diversity of that data against Michigan's landscape, because it will be very different. So I think if you look in my entry plan, one of the things that I mentioned is that we may just need to start a special education task force if that's something we hear in the listening and learning sessions as a challenge across the board.
Through the chair. Do you have another question?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Wanted you to speak to also graduation rates for strategies or your experience for foster youth to increase graduation rates there, as well as closing the achievement gap.
Certainly. I'm going to go back to attendance again, because that is a huge challenge for our transient students. When we look at our homeless populations, our foster care populations, our students who don't have regular routines, our high-need students, our economically disadvantaged students in early grades, students who don't have structures and systems often have higher rates of attendance. And I go back to attendance, because attendance is access and opportunity. Daily instruction, learning recovery opportunities, the nutrition value there, the mental health support, the ability to have a community and have positive feelings means you go to school. So having that opportunity to be in school is a true learning, a leading indicator of where our students are. I think I've heard you speak at a couple board meetings about helping communicate across foster families, biological families, and really fostering strong communication pathways for students who might not be coming to school, for students who are disengaged, for students who are having challenges. We also have to foster those communication opportunities to make sure those students have the supports they need, to have the access and opportunities that their peers who aren't facing that transidency and those challenges as well. So I think it's important to put our children who are marginalized, our children at risk, our children who are missing school, and really strategize around them. In Knoxville, there was a, a high-needs elementary school that met every morning on a group of kids that were their 20 kids, and there were homeless kiddos. And there were homeless kiddos, there were foster families, there was kiddos who had a parent who had passed away, and they met for 15 minutes on those 20 kids every single day and just briefly touched base, because that was that tier-three urgent support for those kids who needed just a little bit more. And make sure that we are tracking very closely all those wraparound whole child indicators before it gets too late. Because if I've missed two months of school, if I've disengaged for two months and I'm in Algebra I, or if I'm in sixth grade reading, I'm going to lose a lot more because that compounds. So I think it's incredibly important to think about those early warning structures for our students who are more experiencing more risk than others.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Leadership is complex, as you know. There's thousands of theories and many of them overlap. I'm really interested in your personal perception of your management style, especially how it relates to your former staff, negative and positive, and how they interpret your management style. The board has received links to articles that indicate that you've had issues raised regarding your ability to effectively manage and cooperate with individuals in your organization who report to you, as well as problems with providing timely reports to the Virginia Legislature and insurance procurement, so I can say that word. So if you could help me understand that, please?
Sure. I believe deeply in leadership. I believe in my application packet, you see a letter of recommendation from the Women Leading Ed Chair and have supported state leaders across the country and believe deeply in supporting and coaching leaders. Within my own organization, I think we joked a little bit about Microsoft Teams, but truly deeply believe in an open door policy and bringing anything to the table. And when you have 500 staff members who are regionally based all over the state, it's important to provide those opportunities. Within an organization, when you are looking at Virginia in particular, who is tied to a political space, and that political space changes a great deal, there's tension and stress with your agency staff, because they don't know what's going on, they don't know where things are going. And creating central and creating opportunities for voice takes some structural realignment and some structural support. And so when I came to Virginia in particular, we had to reestablish leadership team meetings and quarterly meetings with leadership, so they felt like they had a voice and a connectivity and an opportunity to see that pathway and vision forward. They may have been going down one direction, and we may want to have centered it based on the voice across the state. And so bringing coalescing and bringing together around leadership staff to make sure we are moving forward in the best interest of children and making sure children were at the center of our decisions. In the same space, I had to create a senior staff leadership team that reported and talked and communicated regularly. Sometimes there was no accountability for making sure we were making decisions in the best interest of children. So the senior staff really established close relationships. We met weekly, we traveled the state together, and we worked together. Virginia was also at a space where the Chief Financial Officer had been there for 32 years, and he retired in September. And when your boss leaves, a couple of your staff underneath you leave as well. So we were really rebuilding that finances team. And you mentioned the procurement article, I think, that happened on May 19th. I was not asked about that, I was not given a copy of that report. I left in the middle of March. It mentioned a former executive officer. I don't know if that was me, because no one commented or communicated with me. But I do know that my Chief Financial Officer, my Chief Operating Officer had left in the fall, and we had a new Chief Financial Officer. And along the lines of growing talent, I wanted to make sure she had support, and she worked closely with the Department of Planning and Budget around a large contract like Pearson. And that was also important to me, is that we had national and state experts support our team, and we contracted with different entities and organizations to support the development and the cohesive vision of the state.
Thank you. In the first interview, we heard a lot about the need to elevate the teaching profession. There are many initiatives in place across the state focused on recruiting, preparing, and retaining educators. Tell us which initiatives you would prioritize in your first year as the state superintendent to continue these efforts, and what areas need improvement to achieve lasting success?
Yes, I think educator recruitment and retention was one of the key areas of my entry plan and a critical need. I think Michigan has many different programs happening, and one thing I would want to do is to see which programs, whether it is a Grow Your Own Apprenticeship, whether it is a Tuition Reimbursement, whether it is focused on different regions and very localized like Talent Together, or whether it's a statewide opportunity like a Grow Your Own Apprenticeship or an early CTE, to see which programs not just bring and attract people to the program, but actually see through and to and through and retain our teachers five years in. So understanding that data is incredibly important. One of the reasons we focused on both our CTE Aspiring Educator Program and our Grow Your Own Apprenticeship in Virginia was because those programs had a track record of retaining teachers five years in. And the design of those programs didn't ask students to go to a college campus and learn theory and then spend 10 weeks learning to teach and then start in a classroom day one. They actually brought students to a community and a school. And so whether it was a paraprofessional, a bus driver, a secretary, they would have the opportunity to work in the school, take their coursework in conjunction of being in the school and in the community, and build that natural science of learning bridge between what I'm learning in the classroom and what I'm doing every day. They also were paid that paraprofessional salary, so they were able, I know Michigan pays their student teachers, which is amazing, but paying the teachers while they're going so they're not trying to live on ramen noodles and become a teacher, right? That starts you with a negative perception of the value of a teacher. And then really working through the commitment to that school after you finish your program, because you've been in that school, you know the community, you know which teachers will help you, you know how things work and operate, and you build that. We talk about whole child a lot, you build that whole efficacy of a teacher, so that the day-one teacher has been in the school for two years as part of a Grow Your Own program, and maybe 10 years or 12 years as part of a paraprofessional, and has that ready intrinsic success. The other thing that we really focused on in Virginia was looking at our CTE programs around aspiring educators and our juniors and seniors in high school. We know that in high school, our young people have a huge need to serve. And tapping into that and really building associate's degree programs, we use the CDEA program in the high school. So if I'm a high school student and I want to serve and I think I want to be a teacher, I spend two years learning to become a teacher as part of my CDA, as part of my CTE, or my innovative program pathways in high school. And then at that opportunity, I am able to graduate, walk across the stage, and then return to the school on day one as a paraprofessional, finish my degree, never leaving the school. In our rural areas in Virginia, that was a tremendous opportunity, because once the kiddos left, they never came back. And they know their communities, they know the values, and really giving the opportunities. So I would love to see what the landscape looks like in Michigan, to see which programs are really creating that retention for teachers, so that we build that program over time and that pathway over time. So I wouldn't jump on those two things in Michigan, but I would definitely want to look at the data to see what is working. The other thing I would say is, a lot of times when you ask teachers why they leave, they leave because of a leader. And so we worked very closely with our Elementary School Principals Association and our Secondary Principals Association to build mentorship programs, and they led those with the department and support on really mentoring some of our high needs schools and those principals in really tough situations. For some reason, we put early career principals in the toughest schools. How do we mentor them and how do we create a culture of sustainability for our teachers? So it's not truly a teacher pipeline program, but it really changes the culture and helps us retain teachers. So I'd be interested in looking at that data for Michigan as well.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm an equity over equality guy, right?
Right.
And so with all the challenges we have here in Michigan across the gamut, even with all the historical strategic plans, and you coming from Virginia with rural...
Well, I just want to say, I spent two years in Virginia, 10 years in Tennessee and 10 years in Ohio.
For me, they're both rural.
Okay, yeah.
Even with those things for improvement and those plans, everybody has great ideas, often the urban communities and urban districts still face the deepest inequities in resources, and that's across the board, from, you know, teacher retention to student achievement. Do you have a vision or plan on tracking that? The systematic, systemic challenges and ensuring students in disenfranchised communities have the same opportunities for success as their counterparts in more well-off districts?
Yes, and I think some of those inequities and some of those lack of voices have spurred organizations like Memphis Lift and Nashville Propel to try and speak their voice about the challenges and inequities they face. And I think often we don't think of the school as the hub of the community. And one of the ways we have to do that, to bring our folks together, is bring the school at the center and bring the school at the center of the hub. In Memphis, we brought big, huge fairs together at the charters, at our public schools, to pass out preschool backpacks, full of literacy language materials in English and in other languages for families to feel connected to school. And so I think that is one thing we need, not answering your question necessarily, but saying things we need to be able to do is bring our families back to our schools as a hub and a center. One of the things you'll see in my entry plan is performance targets, and I spend a lot of time with data and looking at data across student groups, across our economically disadvantaged, across our ethnicities, and those tend to be centralized in our urban centers. And thinking about what resources, a lot of you have talked about transparency, what resources are going in and what the outcomes are. The other piece in tracking and looking at data is we have to look at what's working. A lot of times, we just look at numbers and we say, oh, Detroit's not meeting their reading metrics, but they're growing students at 400%. What is happening in that school? What reading practices, what teacher support practices, what community gathering practices? And how do we build that model and scale that model? One of the things you mentioned LEAD and the charter school that I was so proud of is we were able to look at Cameron College Middle School Prep. They had 100-plus languages, but their growth on end-of-year assessments was 400% any other school in Nashville. What were they doing and how do we scale and spread that? So looking at the data, understanding the data, but using things like Promising Practices Playbooks, using things like Educator Spotlights helps this school over here see what's possible and what's working here, so we can scale and spread initiatives and change those data stories for all of our children.
So following up on that, and not just urban school struggle, but rural schools at the other end of the spectrum, struggle with barriers outside of the classroom. So from poverty, hunger, technology, housing deficiencies, and many other variables of limited, are limited not just externally but internally and the resources crossing that directly impact learning. How would you lead the districts in addressing these inequities so that the education gap is reduced due to these, this litigation of variables?
As we studied attendance, attendance was how inequity showed up a lot of time. Students not having transportation, students not having food, students not having a family member to watch their brother or sister. A lot of times those needs, students not having a home or a place to sleep because of foster or homelessness issues, a lot of times those show up in the child not coming to school. So one of the things that worked in our rural area, I mentioned Norton City, they changed their attendance by 24% by having an attendance officer who connected with families to see what gaps and what challenges were happening in that small rural area and centering resources. When I look at Newport News in a shipbuilding community, they were facing some massive mental health, some massive barriers, and needed to train their staff on watching for those early indicators. So I think those barriers that you talk about, that wraparound, not engaging in school and not being successful, often show up in our first range in attendance. And that's why I love those task force at the school level that really diagnose and understand what's happening with kids. We talked about the community and schools model. I think that's a great way, whether you're in an Appalachia area, or you're in an urban area, or you're in the Upper Peninsula, bringing resources into school connects families who need things to the school as a resource and support, and then brings the child into the classroom. So I think there are a lot of resources and a lot of toolkits, but I appreciate your concern in thinking about how we think about that and make sure that we're spotlighting, that we're taking those model practices, both in areas like the Upper Peninsula and areas like Detroit, and understanding what's working and model and scaling those opportunities.
Thank you.
But almost four years ago, we had a, there was a shooting in Oxford, Michigan, with four students were killed. And there's been a lot of questions about how things happened then. One of them was about what's called emergency operating plans, I don't know, EOPs, I'm not sure if they have those in Virginia, but whether it was in place, when it had been updated, there's kind of a lack of transparency, as I understand it. But nonetheless, just in broad terms, we've been talking at the table about trying to get MDE, and if you were to become the state superintendent, would you make sure that all the districts have EOPs in place, that they're reasonable and updated on a regular basis? That's one related to the shooting. Second thing is, one of the parents came and testified, and I think he brought up a good idea that to try to make sure things are as safe as possible, maybe looking at government immunity. And I know that you're from a different state, so I don't want to get into necessarily the statute, but just broadly speaking, would you be in favor of advocating for a change in government immunity so that maybe if somebody is killed or seriously injured at a school or at a school function, that the district could be held accountable in a better way than is currently being done? Because the parents said that I think that the, you know, it would be systemic change, because the insurance companies that would be on the hook for such a matter would make sure that the schools were as safe as possible now with, when you remove that kind of governmental immunity. So if you could speak to those two items?
Sure. Happy to talk to school safety, have experienced that from Ohio to Tennessee to Virginia in evolutionary ways. The last week I was in Nashville was the private school shooting in Nashville. My boss's child was near that school, and I had a staff member in that school. So I feel greatly, Virginia is well-known for college campus shootings, Newport News school shootings of a teacher, so I'm very familiar with student safety. And ultimately, if our students don't feel safe, and that's the whole intent of Goal Three, right? If our students don't feel safe, they're not going to feel comfortable learning. If our teachers don't feel safe, they're not going to be able to teach. So I think school safety plans are incredibly important. I think as part of those school safety plans, we have to bridge with the community law enforcement agencies, because our community law enforcement agencies are the experts in safety, and our schools are the experts in educating children. So as part of school safety, we talk about bringing complex stakeholders and complex ideas together. I think it's important to bring our community safety officers into conversations around our schools for safety purposes and thinking about safety plans. I have walked through schools in all three of those states where teachers prop open the side door because their ventilation systems aren't working, to create better ventilation systems for the day. That's a reasonable thing for a teacher to feel like they need to do to make sure their children aren't falling asleep, to make sure they have ventilation, but it's also dangerous. So how do you bring those expertises together to serve children and serve the community is incredibly important. Public safety plans are required in Virginia, they're required in Tennessee, and that partnership with either a school safety officer or some kind of connectivity to the local safety department is a required and transparent opportunity. One of the things we talked about at the beginning of last year, when all of those threat hoaxes and cellphone issues were going around, was how do we communicate better with our families? Because our families were concerned, as you spoke to, about the safety protocols and practices that were happening. And a lot of times, the schools weren't sharing their safety protocols, because they wanted to make sure that safety was paramount. So I think there's a communication space before an accountability, before an immunity space, where we work with our schools to better communicate with our families, that they do run safety drills, that they do have safety... they do run safety drills, that they do have safety plans, that they post those safety plans, and it's more of a community conversation around safety and coming together. Because a lot of times, President Hugh, you talked about this, if there's not transparency, then there, there is tension. So, how do we create transparency around the public safety work? And how do we create community conversations about what it looks like to be safe in my community? Member Bullock, you talked about the differences between Appalachian and urban. Safety in an urban school and the comfort level of safety in an urban school might look very different than safety in upper, the Upper Peninsula, or in our rural communities across Michigan. You have to be able to have those community conversations, and sometimes, we don't realize, as educators or school leaders or new school leaders, that we need to have those conversations. So, I think, Member McMillan, before we jump and work on immunity and those kinds of things, we need to talk about what is the tension that is causing those concerns, and making sure that as a community, our schools are the safest place for our children.
Through the chair.
I am big on, and I, and I have partnered with different law enforcement agencies. However, there are some communities that don't feel safe with law enforcement. So, what is the strategy there?
I think the conversation around safety is important. I think the present, the presence of a law enforcement official in a school may not be the right space for certain communities that don't feel safe. But I think leaning into their expertise in some of our, our safety centers, we have safety centers across the country, and public safety centers across the country. As we were looking at cellphones, we leaned into a lot of those national centers. One of those centers is at the University of Virginia. There's another center in Ohio. There are options to get safety experts that may not mean the president, the presence of a law enforcement official in the school.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I guess just, okay, so you don't see, just to follow up, you don't see a role in the state, kind of making sure that the 800 or whatever, you know, districts have plan, a plan that's reasonable and regularly updated?
No, 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 I think that's important.
Okay.
I think it's absolutely important to make sure that we have safety plans for our schools, and that it's regular and that it's updated. I don't know that we need to go as far as the immunity law, but it's absolutely essential for our schools to have safety plans for children.
Thank you.
I mean, we, we have to have plans. We have early warning indicator plans, we have plans for literacy, we have plans for nutrition, we have plans for snow days. Having plans for school safety is, it's just part of the business that we are in today.
Thank you.
We set a trend on our first, on our first interview, so we will continue with that and take a very short break and come right back.
Okay.
So, five, 317, 317.
Not that.
All right, stick to it.
Not that 317.
We're all back, and so we will start the next round of questioning. And I, you've talked a little bit about literacy. You know that we, our literacy isn't, is something that we definitely have to get a hold of here in Michigan. So, I'll ask some of this again, some of it is a little bit connected to some of the other answers that you've already given. But we know that literacy is more than teaching children how to read, it's about ensuring they have access to books that reflect them, books that help them want to read, as well as reflect their lived experiences. Again, we mentioned the Restoring Excellence Agenda from Virginia, and those history standards being criticized for removing and restricting books that may, well, I say were, books that do reflect some of our, our children. So, as we're fighting to raise proficiency, and to protect the right of every child to see themselves in their curriculums, as well as in their school libraries, how will you lead on literacy, so that students not only learn to read at grade level, but also have access to, to such books? And obviously, you know, we're living in a climate where we also have a president who is looking to change what our museums look like, to rewrite history. And also, if you want to speak to PA 146 and PA 147, our literacy laws here in Michigan, and adding, what are some things that you would do moving forward to add to, to the strength of those, that legislation?
So, I can't speak to the history social science standards process, because those were on the agenda before my first day, but my responsibility was implementing the history social science standards. And you did mention the delay in releasing the instructional materials, because we had to make sure the instructional materials represented the diversity of the districts that we served, whether it was Newport News, whether it was Appalachia, and the diverse populations that might be served in Northern Virginia. So, making sure we had something that was a framework from a state level, that communities could operate in, was a shift from some of the challenges you mentioned in the history standards, that I felt like it was important to do, and took more time to make sure that was representative. I think it's incredibly important, as we think about the science of learning to read, and all the phonetic pieces, and building that, that ability to read, that as you spoke to, children want to read books, they see themselves, they see opportunities, they see their world. It's also important for our children to see beyond their city block. Some of our children have never been past their city block. And, and literacy and the opportunity to read really expands the world. So, I think a diverse range of literature is incredibly important, and it's part of the curriculum adoption process that needs to happen at the local level, and providing those frameworks and opportunities for diversity in what the main characters are, what the challenges are, making sure that they see themselves. I, I think Michigan has done a great job in those pieces, and in that guidance across the state, and was really excited for where the mirrors work, the, and the doors, the sliding doors, and, and the literacy work. I think those come together, as, as we think about what needs to move forward around literacy, there, there are multiple pieces, right? And PA 146 talks about that, and I'll, I'll talk about that in a second, but there is a continuum of literacy that allows a child to build knowledge of the world and be able to express that. Having opportunities not to read the canon is incredibly important, to have that diverse opportunity for children, and important for those diverse opportunities to be selected by a community, and at the community level. There is no bearing at the state or the national level to select what kinds of opportunities children see in their daily lives. That, that should be a community decision, and a decision within evidence-based materials that, that develop that science of reading process. I think when we look at PA 146, it is an outstanding, complex, comprehensive law that talks about materials, that talks about assessment, that talks about coaching. But the difference between all of the Lego blocks sitting on a table there, and putting the masterpiece together, is the big challenge that state agencies have to support, districts, RISA's, public school academies, ISDs in, and bringing those together, so it looks seamless in a classroom, and that a brand-new teacher and a 20-year veteran teacher are able to teach literacy well to children, is why we are having literacy challenges across the country. That, that gap between great legislation, policy frameworks, and the actual implementation. And that is why it's one of the critical focal areas in my entry plan, is to bring those together, to talk about the comprehensiveness of literacy law, and, and the comprehensiveness of literacy practice, and how you move in that direction. I talk a lot about literacy in a variety of spaces, about teachers drive, we drive to work every day. I don't remember the turns I make on my way to work. Teachers who have been teaching for a long time, who have to think about reteaching what the science of reading is, it takes time, it takes support, it takes coaching, it takes that critical assessment, to know whether or not my kids are moving in that process. And so, excited to use my entry plan, use the different pieces of that, to bring leaders across regions and, and the state, to really lean in to building strong implementation that is coherent. You'll also see in my entry plan, the bringing along of families and family engagement in literacy. It is critical that we support our families in understanding literacy practices. I tell this story about my daughter. When my grandson was four, she would go to Walmart and buy all these Sightword flashcards. I would come over, we'd talk about what she was doing, and I'd throw the flashcards away and give her some sound, sound, you know, great opportunities to build language, to read aloud, to do those things. And I'd come back, and we'd throw it away, but our families need, like, opportunities that are comfortable in their own language, to build language, to build vocabulary, to build literacy experiences. You talked about diversity in, in literature. We need to provide that diversity of literature, to bring those coming together, because it's not just about learning to read. There is a great benefit, a social-emotional benefit, to having being read to, and that's part of that family engagement in literacy, that is critical to the implementation component that is not necessarily in PA 146 or 147. I think PA 147 is a great opportunity for Michigan, that I wish we had had in the legislation in Tennessee, because it talks about our higher eds and how we prepare new teachers. I can talk, and have talked to some ISD superintendents and local superintendents, are like, we get all these teachers, and we have to retrain them. Well, 146 helps set that up, so a brand-new teacher sitting in a classroom has that evidence-based instruction, in the same way we're training teachers across the state, and really brings cohesion together. So, excited about the opportunity, focused on that in my entry plan, and I think it's taking all of those Legos that are in PA 146 and 147, and helping convene our leaders around a coherent path forward, so that they can build literacy practices, build excitement, build engagement, and let our children love literacy, love seeing characters like themselves, love having the opportunity to look at diverse literature a- and learn from that.
So, given your experience in state government, in state leadership, both in Tennessee and in, in Virginia, what do you feel is the appropriate role of a state superintendent and this, and a state education agency, in setting or recommending innovation in teaching, and learning, and student experiences, while avoiding a one-size-fit-all?
Yeah, there's a difference between a framework and a sandbox, and determining the grains of sand. And I think when you're at a state agency, and the experiences I've had, is you, you support diverse communities, you support diverse needs. We've talked about urban and suburban, rural, I've had the opportunity to work in a very small rural district in Ohio. You are supporting and providing the evidence framework that provides the opportunity. I, I think innovation is critically important, and you need to be the barrier removal. So, when I, in my entry plan, talked about doing an analysis of statute, policy, and procedure, we need to look at comprehensively what barriers might be in place to allow innovation to happen. Because one of the things you also need to do is allow those pilots of innovation, as Michigan has around teacher preparation, learn from that innovation, and then scale things that are actually working and providing promise. So, it's a balance between creating a framework around evidence, and allowing districts to operate in that framework, and also removing barriers for innovation pilots and different things, studying that work, learning those promising practices, and providing the, the playbooks, and the, the opportunities to scale and spread things that are really working and working well.
Just to follow up, if I may. So, just, just two follow-up questions. So, what, what happens when you want to scale up, something that you believe is to be a good, good model, and simply funding, the sufficiency of funding is simply not there? That presents an enormous challenge, and so what happens then, number one? And number two, what happens when the governance structure that you have to work from? what happens when the governance structure that you have to work from, which is somewhat specific to Michigan and that we're a local-controlled state? We have these various layers that have something to say about education. When one of the biggest complaints is that there's a lack of coherence amongst all of these different voices, not to mention stakeholder groups?
Sure. So I think your first question was around funding. And I think one of the things we have to do around funding is we have to tie the funding to the work and the outcomes. Because if we don't tie the funding to the work and the outcomes in our pilots and our practices, we don't know how much things cost. So it looks like we're asking for money without a cost-benefit analysis, without a return on investment. So I think it's incredibly important as we think about innovations. And you'll see in my entry plan, not only is there the opportunity to reflect, but what are the resources and support you're going to need to make this successful? We have to tie those two things together. Our local superintendents do that every day. We don't always do that at the state agency. So tying what the work is, how much it's going to cost, and partnering those together helps eliminate some of that unfunded mandate feeling. We had to do that in summer programming in Tennessee post-pandemic. How much is it actually going to cost to mandate summer programming? What does that look like to have a child in summer school a day? Are there meals for breakfast? Are there meals for lunch? Are there transportation costs? What are the transportation costs for rural? And you have to balance the program and a deep cost analysis to help make sure that the understanding that the program will cost money and here's the impact. And those cost-benefit analysis, those return on investment are incredibly important when you're talking about funding and when you're talking about children's opportunity. I think it facilitates that transparency in the opportunity. And then, secondly, you talked about governance structure and local control. I think a lot of times we swing in pendulums, right? Like if I'm so tight that I'm manning a one-size-fits-all, everybody wants local control. But when we're so far in local control, I've heard over and over, we just want a vision and a path forward. I think part of the state role is creating the roadway, whether I drive a bus, whether I drive an electric car, whether I drive a 1970 Scooby-Doo van. Like the bus I drive and whether I drive in the fast lane and whether I drive in the middle lane, those are things that provide the flexibility and opportunity and the choice for schools. So when we think about that in education standpoint, the way in which I do seat time flex and competency-based learning might be a little bit different, but the vision and the path forward and the opportunity to be able to do that has to be set by the state vision. How in which you move allows you to take those promising playbooks, those educator spotlights, to scale and spread when educator experts are talking to each other and they have the voice and opportunity to share promising practices. That's why those literacy planning leadership series are so important to me because we saw that. We said, you have to have an assessment. Here's the list of assessments. They talked. They talked about how long they take. They talked about the correlation, the benefits for large populations of English learners, which one worked better? And they worked together to build that. But the roadway and the framework is something you can do at the state level. How you operate inside of that, you have to build spaces for your ISDs, your schools, your public school academies to work together within a framework setup.
Okay. Please talk to us about your advocacy in Tennessee for the ed publishing company Amplify, which received a failing grade on the state's evaluation but was recommended by you to be added to the textbook adoption list. Especially troubling is Amplify's offering of Ed Hirsh's Core Knowledge Language Arts Curriculum, which defines knowledge in a way that equates learning with memorization and teaching with the simple transmission of information and attempts to institutionalize a curriculum that focuses almost exclusively on contributions and perspectives of mainstream European-Americans. Is this an approach you would plan on bringing to Michigan?
I have no knowledge of advocating for any curriculum, nor would I advocate for curriculum. That's not an appropriate space for a state leader, especially in a place where there is a curriculum adoption process with clear rubrics and support. When I entered into Tennessee, there were incomplete processes in their adoption practices. There were rubrics not followed, and we had to step back. And multiple publishers had to be re-reviewed. It was five years ago. I can't tell you which curriculum moved forward, which didn't in that space. But there was no advocacy of Amplify in any way. I think when you are looking at a state curriculum process, you want to adopt on that evidence-based science, as I talked about earlier with President Pugh. And then the decision to select curriculum and the opportunities to see materials that reflect students is an important community-based process in which the community would make that decision on the needs and space of the community. So I have not spoken with Amplify, I've not spoken on an Amplify session. I have not done any advocacy work with Amplify or any other curriculum provider.
Okay.
So in phase three, talk to us about the Attendance Matters Michigan campaign. That's very interesting to me. I'd love to hear more about it.
Sure. So I think one of the things we forget is during the pandemic, we told families, keep your kiddos at home. And there's unintended messages in keep your kiddos at home. And so we are in a space where families are like, oh, my kiddo's got a cough. I mean, my daughter does this all the time. Oh, she's got a cough. I think we should stay home. We have to help re-energize and engage our families about all the things that happen in our great schools, about all the resources. Remember, Bullock, you talked about the things that happen in schools and communities and schools and the things that our urban schools need. There are great programs for our families and our children. An Attendance Matters campaign elevates that, that there are supports, there are resources, and there are engagement opportunities in the school and working with the school. A lot of times when we talk to families, they didn't realize that their kiddo had missed eight days, 12 days. They didn't understand what happens when you miss daily instruction. So we did a lot of activities where we lined up kiddos and we said, oh, you've missed two days. This child's been there all day. You've been out of school. And so like just the simple visual of lining children up on the days that they were there, oh, you were here, you were not here, you were here, you were not here, which we saw with some of our marginalized populations creates, it says you missed 20, but you actually probably missed 40 because when you came back, you were trying to figure out what they were doing, and the teacher didn't have time to help you, which frustrates the teacher, right? So you create this cyclical challenge. In an Attendance Matters campaign, you help families re-energize around why come to school? How do I reach out to my child's teacher or the counselor or the attendance rep because my child has a tummy ache for the third day in a row? What's going on? How do we provide those supports? We lost our housing. I can't get to school. Transportation. In our Attendance Matters campaign, some of our rural communities said their parents couldn't get out to the bus stop because they had a new baby and they didn't have a stroller to take their child out to the bus stop and wait. So they didn't go to the bus stop. We had several families talk about we're out surfing here. We can't go to school here because we're zoned for here. How do you create those opportunities for conversations? A lot of our schools decided to have an attendance representative that was the gatekeeper. We do that a lot with a lot of different people, which I don't recommend our counselors. We add one more thing to our counselors' plates. But really thinking about who helps facilitate those attendance opportunities. Sometimes we don't talk about it, and we don't talk about the wellness that comes along with attending school. So that campaign was huge. We created packets, communication packets. I had schools all over the state just take and give, run social media campaigns, run buttons, talk about different opportunities. But we created things for our districts to turn and take, to customize, to think differently. And through our Attendance Task Force work and through that toolkit, we polled from schools that were doing really well around their communications. There was an elementary school in Middle Virginia that created a huge bulletin board, and they tracked classrooms along the Olympics timeline and just brought the presence and importance of attendance to the forefront of our communities with our families.
What was the, I'm assuming there was a positive correlation between the attendance campaign and graduation rates? Was there any?
It was too early. But we had 86% of our schools improve their own attendance. We dropped our statewide attendance by 3.1% in one calendar school year, and we increased nine million hours of students attending school every day.
I'm assuming there's a body of research that does show there's a positive correlation.
Attendance Works and AEI are probably the biggest experts working on, Attendance Works out of John Hopkins University and does a ton of different studies with urban programs like communities and schools, has done a ton of work in California and in Texas. AEI is doing a lot of what you're talking about, graduation, post-secondary opportunities, student groups, thinking about the data correlation over time. And they're collecting publicly released data at the federal level.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. As state superintendent, you'll be interacting with about 823 local superintendents, 56 ISD RISA superintendents, professional organizations, legislators, governor's office, and special interest groups, of course. Each one's unique, as you would expect. Your interactions, your guidance, your priorities can and will make a difference in how these audiences react to you and then either support or oppose the issue at hand. Please provide us with an overview of your commitment to building trust, adjusting to and understanding the strengths and limitations of different audiences you'll interact with and how you see those interactions benefiting Michigan students.
Sure. So I deeply believe in what you just talked about and the importance of establishing relationships and two-way communication pathways with our stakeholders. It was one of the reasons the listen and learn phase was so important in my entry plan. And there was a cross-function of opportunities, whether it be working in the communities with our ISDs and our local schools and our local superintendents, collectively in the school learning tours, whether it be the stakeholder groups and the focus groups around the ed associations. I think those two-way communications are incredibly important. And I think you put money in the bank when you create spaces for conversations and you efficiently manage your time and are out in the field. I think one of the things that my team will say about me, to your earlier question, is they loved being on the road with me because we were on the road and having the opportunity to engage and have conversations and listen and learn. But we were also getting business done in the car and pathways. And you have to be efficient with those methods as a state leader because there are 820 and 56 and 27 and an elementary school principals association, a secondary principals association, and an urban principals association and a rural. Every, you know, there are many, many different organizations in play, and you have to create regular opportunities to come together and have conversations. One of the other ways I think is really important is bringing cross-functioning stakeholders together so that they can hear from each other. So I talked a little bit about business chambers, so add that layer in. Having business chambers and superintendents come together and opening those conversations across stakeholders, one, it helps you manage all of those spaces, but also brings those diverse conversations together for innovation. So I think it's incredibly important. It was something I put in my package. It was something I found important to think about different ways to have communication and different ways to bring those together. But there's also economies of scale and efficiencies that you have to put in place so that you're available so that when a superintendent in southwest Virginia, when a hurricane hits, knows they can call you and you're going to figure out how to prioritize and move things around to solve that because that's another two-way communication relationship. You have to have a point of contact for a region so that they can't get you or an association that can't get you, they have a senior staff member, and they know how that communication with you works so they feel confident that they're also having access to the superintendent. Because a lot of people don't realize how important that work is, whether you do it or you choose not to. If you choose not to, you are losing money in the bank of building those relationships and changing opportunities for children.
Before I ask my question, I want to piggyback on Judy's question. And you mentioned earlier about the difference in the structure here in Michigan. And at this level, it doesn't matter what state you're in, in education. It's highly politicized. What were some of the issues that you ran into in any of your roles with dealing with different stakeholder groups? And what did you learn? What lessons did you learn?
Every person who's coming to you has a reason they're coming to you. And it might be deeply personal. It might be their own child. It might be an experience in the legislator or in the political world. It might be a constituent that they're advocating for. But there is a reason they're coming and they want you to solve a problem. And their reason for solving the problem may not sit within the framework or the authority of your role. But helping them find solutions, whether they're always the solutions they think they wanted when they came to you, is incredibly important because if you let people go frustrated, they're not going to come back and you're not going to be solving problems for people who care about the problems they're bringing to you. So that's a circular answer to say that you are always a connector of figuring things out. I would say, does everybody get what they want? Probably rarely, if ever. But bringing those voices together, bringing ways to provide solutions for that constituent, for that stakeholder group, finding ways to help them feel better about the problem that they're bringing to you is incredibly important. I had a legislative member who had a parent who called him every single day for two weeks because every time he brought his twins to school, they sent him home. And they sent him home because they told the parent they were misbehaving and they couldn't be controlled. The parent couldn't get information from a brand-new principal, so he would call the legislative member. The legislative member's like, solve this. I need your help. So we had to very carefully bring wraparound supports for the parent and the principal in the school so that you could solve the problem. I couldn't call the principal and say, hey, let these kids come to school, right? And I couldn't call the parent and say, hey, the school's blah, 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 blah. But you have to move the pieces around so the parent feels like they can get their child to school and there's happiness. The principal feels like they're still the leader of the school, and the legislative member still feels like they got the problem solved. And I think that's part of state work, that you have to see all the pieces on the chessboard and bring it to solution. Not always the solution they think they want on the entry point, but so that the problem is solved and that children are at the center of solving that problem and it's better for kids.
Thank you. My question is, we've heard a lot about proposed budget changes at the federal level and the push for a roads funding package at the state level. This type of a potential budget tug-of-war could threaten vital educational programs. What's your process for determining what to cut or preserve in this political climate?
Sure. I think part of that is advocacy. And I've been watching my colleagues at a variety of state levels do wonderful advocacy around sustaining programs and sustaining budget areas where we absolutely need funds. A lot of times, Washington DC federal's programs are very far away from seeing the impact of those programs, and advocacy work is incredibly important. I also feel like one of the things that, in my entry plan again, that is critical is hearing the resource needs behind the goals. So as we look at budget and as we look at budget priorities, we have to understand what are the targets that we want at the state for children? We've talked a lot about literacy. What do we believe the target for literacy is this year, next year, five years from now? And then what are the funds that we have to put behind for those targets? Those look different in different spaces. And I think as the board works through what they want those targets to be, if I'm selected, we also need to think about the resourcing around our prioritization around those targets. Because if you're going to prioritize strategies for children and think about those strategies, we've talked a lot about the disconnect between funds and strategies. We have to tie those together. What is the cost of that opportunity? How are we going to get there? And it may involve these cuts to get there, if cuts are the only option for us.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to amend. I got a question, but I got another one that's been sitting there. It started with, remember Pritchett earlier about what happened in Virginia? And this is a very critical decision of choosing the next state superintendent. And I also believe you're a finalist, not just here, but a finalist in the state of Nevada.
Yes, sir.
And depending on how those selections play out, like if we don't make a decision today, how does that affect you being a candidate moving forward? If Nevada picks you, or vice versa? So getting a getting the confidence of the board, you have decisions to make, which still affect us in that. So I'm trying to get just... Huh? Yes, we do. I thought you were going to ask it a long time ago. So I'm that along with the stuff that happened in Virginia and I was just trying to get the elephant out the room before we keep continuing on and folks are like having these thoughts. I know everyone is sitting here going, she's a finalist. What happened in Virginia? What created the resignation or the moving on?
Sure.
And I just want to get some, out of curiosity, some feedback.
Thank you. I don't do well with elephants, so I appreciate you throwing them all out on the table at once. So first, early in June, I believe in state leadership. I believe you can create the pathways and you truly impact change for children. I am passionate and I work hard for kiddos. And so both positions were open and I applied. As fruition has happened, I have this interview today and an interview scheduled for Thursday. I will say that I have spent hundreds of hours working on an entry plan, learning Michigan, but more importantly, connecting with amazing, passionate educators in Michigan who deeply believe in the opportunities for children. And I feel very connected to those educators. If I was selected for Michigan, I would not move forward with Nevada without any question on the table. But I also have to support my family. So if I'm not selected for Michigan, I do have to move on for Nevada.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know.
No, no.
And you piggyback it?
No.
Oh, okay. I guess that part works for me. I know Pritchett asked the question, but was it more about like the sequence of events that led to the leaving Virginia?
I can answer part of that question. I signed a non-disclosure when I left, so there are some things I cannot speak to based on that non-disclosure. I was the third superintendent under Governor Yonkin when I was hired. And I was hired for specific short-term reasons and I understood that when I came to Virginia. I would not want to take another short-term position. I hope to invest my career in the next position that I take. In that, I was hired to work on the accountability system, to work on the literacy act and make sure that those things came to fruition. President Pew talked about some of the things that the administration had worked on prior to my coming. My focus was on academic work and moving opportunities for children. At the end of last year, in the transition of the federal government and the transition of the work, I completed the legislative season but decided that the opportunity in Virginia, I had accomplished the things that I came for. But the governor had more political agenda to do and I wasn't the right superintendent for that space.
All right. Thank you. Quickly, I got background in juvenile justice, social services. So social, emotional, socio-economical conditions, mental health since COVID or the pandemic. Those behavioral health is being recognized more readily, right? And I've said it's always been there, especially in certain communities. But it was diagnosed or criminalized where in certain communities it gets a diagnosis and different treatment. And so those are two different paths and it's part of the pipeline to prison. So if selected, how would you champion or campaign or get us to a level of of behavioral wellness programming in the state of Michigan, improving academic achievement?
So we know if kids aren't safe, healthy, well-fed, they're not going to learn. And I think just like the Attendance Matters campaign is important, that through line, both in the data we collect and how we speak about the data, how we tell the stories and how we talk about that opportunity, it matters. It's important for us to talk about these things will not allow us to teach in school. And so making that the base is incredibly important. What access and opportunity to mental health resources looks like in the upper peninsula versus in our urban centers is very different. How our communities feel about mental health services in different spaces is different. But laying that out, that it matters, is important for us to start the conversation. I think Michigan has done a great job with things like BH Works and other solutions to provide better access. We also have a pipeline problem. I'm talking comprehensively around our social work staff and thinking about how we provide some kind of social, mental health awareness supports. We cannot expect guidance counselors, guidance counselors to be mental health counselors and the support for families and, and, and. So we have to think about the structure of our schools as well as part of that conversation. And how do we develop professionals to sit in those roles in our schools in diverse settings? We're having our time finding a fourth-grade reading teacher or a high school algebra teacher. Some of these other things are challenges in our processes. I think some states are working with mental health assistant roles and thinking about grow your own pipelines around that. I think that's a great, promising practices that are five to 10 years out. So we need things to put in now. But I think ultimately, we have to teach some self-advocacy skills for our children. And we have to make it okay for our children to say, I'm not okay today. And you've seen classrooms where the teacher says, high five, nope, not looking, and does do those quick checks. We have to create a culture where our students can advocate for themselves. And we have to teach our students how to advocate for themselves in a way that's safe and comfortable when I'm a second grader or whether I'm a junior in high school. And one thing I have noticed with our younger generation, they are more open and transparent. But that doesn't mean that all kiddos are saying those things and asking for those things. And I think that has to be part of how we do school and how we support school. And it starts with that conversation. Again, if you ignore it, you're not going to get those results on the academic side. If you don't make that transparent, if you don't make that part of the curriculum, you're not going to engage in that to make sure you can get to the end game of school.
Since you've been to several states, I'd like to ask about Common Core. I was somebody who fought it when I was in the legislature. And it was really implemented because Washington was, you know, holding over money at the time back in two thousand eight, nine, 10, 11. States are now repealing it, not just red, but purple states are in the process of repealing it. They may be replacing it with things that are similar and just calling it different names. But I guess I'm curious what you think about Common Core because I know Virginia didn't have it. I think Tennessee did when you were there. It probably was implemented when you were there. So what do you think about Common Core? Just the idea that everybody in all the states are, you know, learning the exact same thing basically on the same day. And, you know, especially given how things are changing so rapidly now in our society and, you know, AI and just in jobs that will be here 10 years, you know, 70% of them aren't even thought of right now. You know, just how things are moving so quickly, is that the right thing to do, continue to continue to do? We have it here in Michigan. Or, you know, should we relook at that? I personally would like to, and I'd like to hear your thought on this too. I would like to have more, fewer standards. I asked ChatGPT, how many standards does Michigan K-12 have? And they said, there's no way to know. So I don't know. I think there's thousands. And so
I'm sure there are.
To give teachers more freedom to and latitude so that they can really teach what is best for the kids in front of them, to get maybe skinnier or essential standards. So there's two parts to that, but I guess I'd really like to relook at standards. And I've, when I've talked about essential standards, I've gotten people from all across, you know, all across the political gambit to say that that's a worthy idea of looking at.
Sure. So I was in Ohio when the Common Core standards started coming to fruition and I was the new curriculum director. So I spent the year of the Common Core, as an anecdote, I spent 80% of my time in Columbus and very little time in a small rural district that needed me. And then moved to Tennessee and did implementation work when a lot of that was repealed around that space. My understanding from my perspective is that a lot of the Common Core work were efficiencies of scale for textbook publishers, assessment providers, and to ideally cross-pollinate children across states. So if I come from one state to another state to another state, I have the similar learning opportunities. I am a military spouse. I would like my child, if they are in Virginia, Ohio, Tennessee, Michigan, California, to have the same essential body of knowledge as they move because it's incredibly challenging for our children to move across localities, across schools. So commonality of instruction is incredibly important. A lot of times, I talked about my Nashville example where I walked into classrooms in second grade and they had the autonomy and they weren't teaching anything. They were teaching coloring books, right? So I think there is a balanced approach to this work and a balanced approach to what are the pieces that we want to make sure students achieve at the end of every grade level. I would say a lot of standards in a lot of states and some of the standards that the Common Core was foundational on are impossible to teach in one year. But that common bar and that common set of standards is incredibly important. Looking at that every five years, looking at the evolution of where we are going, where our students are and what the evidence says about teaching instruction. If we had the same reading standards as we did in 1990, we wouldn't be teaching evidence-based instruction in the way we we know it today. I have a good friend, Dan Wallingham, who does brain study science on a national level. And we know a whole lot more about how the brain learns that impacts science. Our impacts classroom instruction and the science of learning. We also know more about engineering and different products and what might be appropriate in our science courses. So it's incredibly important to create a cycle of review. But it's also important to create a bar and a standard that we set and that we hold across our standards.
So I guess you're open to, if I'm hearing you right, you're open to looking at them. And yeah, that bar, I would say those are the essential standards to my, that's my thought, that, you know, you could eliminate a lot, but still have essentials. Coloring books is not the essential. It would be something more.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Board members, do you have any further questions that you would like to ask?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you give us a sense of how, as a leader, you respond to feedback? How do you accept criticism?
Sure.
What do you do when you're in a uncomfortable situation?
I think 85% of the time as a state leader, you are in an uncomfortable situation because people bring tension to you and they want you to solve the tension. So there are always differing opinions, different stakeholders, different spaces that you have to bring together and solve. So I think you have to be comfortable in the discomfort. But you also have to set a clear vision and pathway of how you're going to solve those situations for children. I think that's why state work is so important to me because you are resolving, you are removing barriers. You are creating frameworks, but then giving autonomy to allow success to happen for children and provide that opportunity. I'm a feedback junkie, so I sent out my entry plan to at least 10 different people and asked them to tear it apart. So I constantly am seeking feedback. I'm constantly asking for feedback from my peers. I'm constantly asking for feedback from diverse stakeholders. I had a charter leader assess my plan. I had several people in Michigan look at my plan. I had national experts. I had a small rural superintendent. So I wanted to have different people give me input and I'm constantly seeking that input. I think one of the things that my cabinet would say in Virginia is she's constantly asking for feedback. She's constantly asking for input. But I also provide that for the people around me because I think the only way for us to grow is to constantly seek input and collaboration and collective voice. I think if you operate in autonomy and don't reach out, you won't, you won't get anywhere for kids. You won't move work forward because you're not creating coherence. And I think feedback, input, stakeholder engagement, listening, changing to make sure that you are in the best interests of children is a constant set of work that you have to be invested in.
Just a follow-up. Would that include admitting a mistake?
Sure. Like I said in my last interview, there is always tension between urgency and making sure that you're taking the time to have full stakeholder voice. And so there are mistakes that we make when we're urgent and we're not making those intentional steps. So we have to move forward together and we have to say, that was not the best interests of kids. We need to step back. We need to look at that. We need to make sure we're moving forward in the right way.
Yeah. Glad we have a little bit of extra time here. Thanks for answering your questions quickly. When I first came in, in 2017, I brought in Young Zhao. He's a National Education Leader. And he talked about, and I'd like to ask you the importance of engagement for students. Because he talked about maybe it's, instead of all these metrics, maybe one of the main metrics should be the speed with which kids come run into school versus how quickly they want to get out of school. And so, yeah, I mean, what, you know, there's all this high-stakes testing. There's all this, you know, focus on, you know, I've spent, I've talked with, I went to a union hall and talked to kindergarten teachers. They said, I spend half my time in assessing kids and not actually teaching them. So, you know, how much, you know, and importance of play and, you know, just how, can you speak to that a little bit? Are we kind of, is the pendulum swinging too much to where maybe we need to look at, you know, what makes a kid have joy in learning?
Sure. I think student engagement is incredibly important. If we look at a high school, we have created somewhat of a factory model where I spend 180, 160 days and I learn algebra the same way as the 25 other kids in the classroom. My daughter was really good at math. She was finished with Algebra II before she hit her freshman year. My stepson, we did math a lot and he needed more time and more presence. So I think there is an opportunity to think about time differently in a way that engagement is important. There's also a way for us to think about the subjects we teach. I talked a little bit about teacher preparation and teachers learning to teach and teachers being in classrooms as two isolated spaces. We did a lot of lab learning where we partnered, say, a health sciences program with biology. Virginia Beach did this really cool opportunity, talk about promising practices in a playbook where they combined fitness, health, and biology into a two-hour block. And students did all of the standards for biology, for health and fitness, but they were engaged differently and had opportunities. So I think it's incredibly important for us to think about innovation, for us to provide spaces where it's okay for you to do a two-hour block with health PE. You've covered your biology standards. You will give that assessment for biology at the end of the year to make sure those students met those competencies. But we have to take those model innovations and practices, put them in playbooks, let schools see what works. I am so excited to go to this preschool STEAM Academy and super jealous that President Pew, it's like very close to you because those are innovations that we have to learn from, share, and let people think about things differently. And I do want to say Attendance Works and AEI say the number one indicator for engagement is attendance and whether or not kids show up.
Thank you.
Through the chair, a couple of questions. You mentioned stakeholders. You reached out to multiple stakeholders in Michigan. Did you reach out to union leadership and how did that conversation go?
I have reached out to multiple associations. The only association that responded to me was MASA and I had a great conversation with Teener.
Thank you. And then I wanted to talk about employee relations. I wanted to hear more about your leadership style and how you would approach change management.
I think it's incredibly important in that dynamic and that tension between urgency and getting it right to build those spaces in for your agency. I think that's incredibly challenging when you are given eight years of agenda items to do in two years. So the time and space to be able to work with the agency, to get feedback, to understand those tensions and move in a way that makes sense is part of that entry plan I have with the online survey with thinking about the goals, the performance tasks and the targets. And then thinking about the agency and how we work because I want to make sure that we give enough stakeholder time, both internally and externally, to move through change in a way that's driven by goals and targets that are important for children. children.
And what about your leadership style? What, what is your leadership style?
I have done many programs, many doctoral programs, I had the opportunity to be a Broad Fellow, and, and so there are leadership styles and there are the way you work. I work collaboratively, I ask for feedback, I ask for opportunities. At the end of the day, we are all not going to agree, but we are going to collaborate, we are going to listen to each other's stakeholder voice and we're going to move forward. And so it's important for me that we coalesce around next steps and then we engage and that we give everybody voice and opportunity to have their voice heard at the table and work collaboratively together to be one voice out in the public.
Do you micromanage? Are you laissez-faire? How do you?
I am not laissez-faire.
I don't think that you are, but I just want to
I don't, I don't think that you can manage an organization that impacts children and be laissez-faire in today's day and age. I think many of you have talked about politics and education and the microscope that educational agencies are under today that is different than five or 10 years ago. So there is a dynamic where you have to get a little bit closer, but I think norming on the onset of a project and being collaborative, getting the voice out on the table, understanding, getting clarity collaboratively helps you let that staff member have autonomy. If that staff member comes to you two days before a presentation or a project and you're like, oh, I didn't know we were doing this, it's really hard to move the work forward. So I think the more you can create those spaces, those weekly cabinet meetings, those check-ins, those opportunities to converge and have conversations and coalesce around ideas, on the front end, you are able to give more autonomy as you work through projects. I think you have to establish those kind of spaces in the change management space to be able to do that effectively. And, and there are, there are some growing pains as you learn to do that. I have had projects in multiple roles where someone's been working over here with it and they bring it, I'm going to present this tomorrow and I'm like, oh, we need to talk through that, because there's all of these things that they may not be aware of. So I think it's incredibly important to create those structures for conversation and collaboration early so that you can give your staff autonomy to move forward.
Thank you.
We thank you for what you do for children and thank you for coming before the table and interviewing, and it is your opportunity to give a three-minute closing comments.
Well, I appreciate my time limit, I will definitely stay inside of that this time. You know, Michigan is at a pivotal moment for children. You are thinking about charting pathways forward for every Michigan child and that looks very different. I, I think to do that, we have to listen and learn and we have to build relationships across the state in all different stakeholder venues. And we have to focus relentlessly on those three critical areas that help us move and grow forward. We have to think about early literacy. We have to think about the opportunities that coming to school brings for wellness and overall well-being and success for our children. And we have to learn and grow around our teacher, educator, principal recruitment efforts so that we actually have a retention long-term strategy. I have been in a small rural district, I have served in suburban districts, I have served in charter, I have served in urban districts. I've had the opportunity in state leadership roles to successfully implement two different literacy laws. And I've had the opportunity to reduce chronic absenteeism in Virginia by linking arm-in-arm with our district shoulder-to-shoulder and thinking about how we improve attendance in a very diverse set of communities. We were able to reduce it 3.1% in one year, but more importantly, nine million hours of kiddos in school in one year will reap tremendous benefits. I've had the opportunity to sit in purple spaces and bring very different stakeholders to the table around hard, tough issues, accountability reform, school funding reform in Tennessee, cell phone-free environments, and bring consensus that focused on children to fruition. Those are not easy decisions, those are not easy things to do. But I believe that I work hard and that I'm passionate for children and we can change opportunities in Michigan together to ensure every child has a great learning experience every single day with a great teacher, because together we can bring opportunities and access to every single Michigan child. Thank you for the opportunity to share my experiences and thank you for the opportunity to share how I could support your work moving forward.
Thank you again, Dr. Coons. Okay, board, we have
Can I shake your hand? Is that okay?
That is, that is perfect. And we have 15 minutes, 4:30, four, I better say 4:28, 4:28, and then we will start public comment.
Thank you. For all of you.